Negative.
Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing. Today is May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, the time is six P. M. I would request that you please silence all your cell phones and other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Be my pleasure.
Please stand.
Our most kindly gracious heavenly father, father, we humbly come before you tonight as elected representatives of the citizens of Spalding County. Father, please guide and direct our hands tonight. Father, please help us to know thy will, be with our first responders and our families as we're away and they're away from theirs. Father, please protect us and guide us back safely tonight. Father, be with those that are sick or otherwise afflicted, that they will be comforted, that they will be healed, and that thy will be done in all things. Father, we ask these blessings humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If would please join in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, the agenda to move agenda item number six in reference to the radios to under to number two of new business.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
It's becoming the new number two?
Yes.
The new number three.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, five zero, motion carries. Item, new business, one, approve the detour route related to G dot replacing the Manley Road Bridge over Heads Creek, bridge number two-five-five dash five-zero-zero-one dash zero, project number two, uh, zero-zero-two-zero-one-one-zero. Director Imber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, always a pleasure. Thank you, commissioners. Uh, the Georgia Department of Transportation is considering replacing the bridge on Manley Road that spans Heads Creek. They will be doing this under local impact bridge program. Just so you're familiar, uh, this is a program where they pay for the replacement, so it's at no cost to Spalding County. Some recent bridges that they have replaced are the two on Vaughn Road, Dutchman Road, Wildwood. Those were just in the last three years, and then County Line Road Bridge will be next, later this year or next year. Prior to replacing a bridge, they'll send out information two to three years in advance that includes detour information, send it out to the emergency services and to agencies that are affected. Uh, this information originally came out a while ago. At that time, the detours that would have been nineteen to Birdie Road to Patterson, they have recently informed us that they would like to change that detour to nineteen Vineyard and Patterson. Since this is a change, they will require your approval.
Okay, and your recommendation is?
We recommend that yes, uh, this would be a million dollar project at no cost to Spalding County or to citizens of Spalding County.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, okay, so if you are going northbound, you would turn on Vineyard Road?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Take Patterson to get, I don't understand.
To get back to Manley, and then if you wanted to get on the other side of Manley, then you would make a right that'll take you to that side, the west side of the closed bridge. There'll be appropriate signage, that's always required. That signage will actually be on nineteen prior to Vineyard and then prior to Manley.
So if you're coming from the north, that's not the detour route. You can still go down Manley Road until the bridge point.
That's correct.
But if you need to get to the other stop side coming from the north, you have to pass Manley, get to Vineyard, and then go back up Patterson.
Yes, ma'am. That would be the signed detour.
Yeah, that'd be the official detour.
Nothing to stop you from using Birdie Road.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so how many bridges have we had repaired under this program?
So since I've been director, I think we're at like six or seven.
Was the one out, the low sun city part of this?
Yes, that, well, there was, so some of that was, yes, yes.
So, so my question is, this has been kinda happening about seven, eight years since this started, since this bridge project started? How long have we been involved in this? And, and I'm getting to that to say is that who decided which bridges? I mean, obviously someone inspected these bridges and determined a number for where they were in terms of how raggedy they were or, or whatever. Who did that?
Correct, so I can't speak prior to about I became director, how many bridges were included or replaced. Um, so we have, they, they call this an off-system bridge, cause it's technically not on a G dot roadway. We have approximately eighty-five of these bridges throughout Spalding County. We actually are responsible for maintaining these bridges. Uh, we have a bridge crew that does that maintenance. Uh, G dot inspects these bridges consistently and constantly. Every three years, we'll get a report, it's called a bridge deficiency report, and they will work off of that report to make any repairs to deficiencies through that three-year period. So they use all that data, they've been inspecting bridges since, since forever, and then they use that information, they'll go ahead and advise us that they're looking at two bridges or three bridges or four bridges inside of Spalding County. They do this with every county in the state. They'll come out with a team, uh, the team will be engineers from all over the state. They review all the bridges that are on that list, but they review bridges also in that district, so this would be the third district, and then they make their choices based on that information.
So G dot comes and inspects all of the bridges?
Yes, yes.
I'm just trying to understand, because I remember when the bridge and the flat would not let a bus, would not let a school bus go over it. I feel like, I don't know if it was G dot that told us it could not handle the weight or if we were actually going around and doing that.
So they do, um, they do set the weight limits as well. Uh, that was about a year before my time, so I'm not familiar with specifics on that particular bridge.
So we really don't have any involvement in this, in, in the actual investigative part of it, and then they go back and look at the information and say to you, say to us, we'll fix that bridge.
Correct, so.
So what part, what will, will, what cost will we be responsible for?
So it'll be zero.
So what if, so no utilities, no water lines that are gonna be affected, I'm just trying to.
So occasionally there is a cost, so I know a county line, they just assessed us a fifty thousand dollar charge, but that's the first one in the last of the six or seven that they have, and that was related to a water line. Uh, it's actually related to, um, right of way. So in the last, if we had seven bridges, the last seven million dollars that was provided to us, we paid about fifty thousand dollars.
And the county paid for that?
The county did, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions?
Still cheaper than repairing the whole bridge.
All right, seven million dollars.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. New item, item two, used to be item six, consider approval of Spalding County Radio Core and console upgrade at a cost of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Mr. Wyndham.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, everybody, good evening. A couple of meetings back, we decided to put out an RFP to get the upgrades done, and that occurred, and the one response we got back was from Loudon Communications, representing Harris Corporation, to do the work we needed, and that bid price was nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. As that sinks in, I'd love to say that the county and the citizens haven't yet paid for an upgrade to this radio system since two thousand and eight, Splos paid for it. So if there's a good side to anything, we've gotten our mileage out of this radio system up to this point.
And we are required by state law to provide a radio system, right? I mean, we don't, if it's not this option, we have to go with no, like, we have to have one, right?
I don't know what the law states, but we can't really operate without it.
Now, you remember, we had this whole discussion earlier, this has finally got the money, how much it's gonna cost, back to us.
The original estimate was significantly lower, and where did that number come from?
They came from, both numbers came from Loudon Communications, representing L three Harris Radio Corporation. The first one was in April, and it was seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And this most recent one, as we spoke, was nine sixty-nine, and for specific details, I would defer to Amanda Flores from Loudon Communication.
Welcome, if you wish.
Hey, how are y'all? So, um, they did a different thing with licensing over the last month, we had a price increase at the beginning of April, um, and they've restructured the way that they do it, so if you, if you have what they call Sums, software managed services, on your current system, all of your licensing would transfer over for free. Um, y'all do not currently have sums, and they've changed the way that sums work, so now the licensing is either discounted some or not discounted at all. Um, and that's, that's why y'all had a price increase this go-around, cause when we submit, we submit to Harris, and they give us back all the part numbers that we need to make the system work.
Well, if I recall correctly, I remember when we had this discussion earlier, we did anticipate the increase, so I don't think that's anything that we didn't know that was gonna occur, so.
And it's not, there's only a slight increase on the labor side. The increase that, that significant increase that y'all see is on hardware and licensing and the whole nine. It's not anything that Loudon up.
So this, this was a problem for me when we first got the radio system, because under Harris, it is proprietary, the software, everything. I don't know if that is the same for other radio systems, but I'm, I'm feeling like the only reason that we, um, got only one answer is because in order for us to do something different, we would have to get new, new software?
You'd have to get all new hardware, so we're, we're replacing the brain of all your hardware, we're not replacing all the site infrastructure or anything like that, we're just replacing the brains. So if you were to go out and get a new system, and we're not proprietary, we're P twenty-five, so you can have any vendor come on the system, but the actual brain and the equipment, it all has to match to, to work appropriately for y'all.
So how, how is this system different than, what's, what's the, were the other people that we worked with, Tyler? Was it Tyler who, who also?
Correct, the corporate, the corporation was bought and sold, which, that accounted for the name changes. It was Tyler, it was Mekon Tyler.
Tyco.
Tyco.
That, sorry, and now it's Harris, which is a military vendor of hardware.
Harris than L three Harris, cause they, they buy different companies here or there.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm just, two hundred thousand dollars more is a lot more than what we thought, and I'm, so, and I'm getting to the point to where, I know we got, what, two thousand and eight is whatever, ten, twelve, twenty years that we've gotten over this, or eighteen years? How many years is that?
Sixty.
Sixteen, I mean, I think that's good, because the radio system that we had before we had had for twenty or twenty-five years. I'm just, I'm just wondering where we'll be, I know this is P twenty-five, but we talked about, um, the redundancy, and we talking about being able to, to have more bands. Has any of that happened?
Yes, we, our system went upgraded to phase two, which doubled our capacity to talk, radio, we can talk on it, and that was an upgrade that was part of the two thousand Splos deal or pricing that was done in twenty?
Two thousand and seven, so two thousand and seven, y'all got your system, and Harris said when we, when we go P twenty-five phase two, we'll come in and we'll upgrade everything needed to, based off of this purchase. Well, when phase two came available for y'all, your equipment wouldn't handle phase two, and so Harris replaced all of the equipment for free, because that's what we promised you, that when phase two came out, that we would move y'all phase two.
And what hap, what year into the buy was this?
That was twenty thirteen.
Okay, so we're talking about six years down the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so Harris replaced it, and that's basically a brand-new system for y'all at that point. Um, they phased out, it's the ten A dot six?
Yep.
They phased out ten A dot six two years ago, um, and that's when we were trying to do your consoles and the core kinda separately, but it got to a point where they both had to be done simultaneously, which is why the number is so significant all at once. We tried to do it separately, so it wouldn't hit the county as hard.
So, so my concern is that, do we still have the redundancy? Are you still able to use a radio with the system in the bottom of the, the courthouse? Are you able to ru, use it in the emergency room or in the middle of the hospital?
Yes.
Okay, what about the areas that were, and I don't know if this has to do with the radio or the eight hundred mega, megahertz system, but I know that there was some concerns about dead spaces that the radios were not able to access, and I, the?
The, the dead spaces that we currently have are the same ones that existed the day we bought it and accepted the ninety-five percent portable coverage within the county.
Mm-hmm.
Those haven't changed, because the antennas and the towers and the broadcasting mechanisms haven't changed.
Okay.
We addressed the courthouse, the jail, and the pharmacy and the interior parts of the hospital with amplifiers to bring the signal from outside to in.
Okay.
And that coverage also still exists.
So our, our, the request for this is the request for funding to come out of?
Fund, fund balance.
Okay.
All right, two things, uh, one, uh, I think this is just like, uh, fire trucks, just so everybody has a good feel for what we're, and I believe this is the only bid we got back.
That's correct, sir.
This is the only bidder we got. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
And this is the, and this is the replacement of the software?
This is the replacement of the cores, so you've only got one core that's working currently, so this will replace that working core and give you all your second core back for redundancy, as well as, uh, provide your nine-one-one dispatchers with new consoles. Their consoles are really, really outdated.
The county manager has, uh, pu, pushed this hard.
Yeah.
He, we need this, he says, to be able to have the redundancy. If you remember, we had a system go down, and, uh, this is the fix for it all the way around. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I think, do we have?
I didn't, I know, I.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, who's the secretary tonight? Oh, Reagan, okay, I'd like to have a motion, make a motion to approve the upgrade to the county radio system at a cost of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We don't have anything that says itemized, is there anything in this that says this is, there's a contingency? Is part of this vehicle has a contingency in it?
I don't know what that means, I'm sorry.
That means if it costs ten per, there's ten percent in it.
Right.
Or is the contract written?
As far as payment goes, we can sit down and go over payment options with y'all.
Okay, so we're just approving this, we don't have, this not, this isn't the contract?
Right.
Okay, that's my motion to approve it.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, Rita gave his name.
I didn't, no, I didn't.
All right, thank you, have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, five zero, motion carries, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Professor.
All right.
It was a little while ago.
Old item number two. Application twenty-four dash zero-two Sierra, Charles Love Owner, three eighteen New Salem Road, approximately seven point zero-two acres located in Land Lot fifty-one of the fourth land district. The applicant is requesting a special exemption, exception to re-initiate the construction of a barn dominium.
Thank you, Chair, yes, and, and commissioners. So, uh, this gentleman had started construction of a barn dominium, uh, under a different code, set of rules. He abandoned the project and it stayed dormant for so long that he now has to reapply under the new rules, um, and so he's asking for consideration for the special exception to finish the construction of the barn dominium, which is in effect out there already. It's just, uh, there's some things he had to come into compliance with about the facade and the windows, um, and he has done all that now. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, because he's had some health problems, but, uh, he was, uh, present for the planning commission, and it is the staff's recommendation that you would approve this, uh, special exception.
Planning commission.
Yes, yes, sir, they, they recommend that.
Motion approved.
All right, have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, five zero, thank you for that one. All right, uh, let's see. Item number three, the old item number three, application twenty-four dash zero-four Zulu Harvest Worship Center at Forest Park Incorporated Woodland Church, owner Stuart Vois, uh, agent twenty-two ninety North McDonough Road, approximately a hundred and twenty-six point six-two acres located in Land Lot one-one-one of the San, second land district. Consider applicant's request to rezone the property from R two, single-family residential district, and R, uh, AR one, ar, architectural and residential, to AR one, architectural, excuse me, agr, agricultural and residential.
Yes, sir, and Eva, if you'll pull up the Q public, this is a property, uh, where Woodland Church currently exists, and you'll see, uh, the, the parcel that's outlined in red, that it is currently, uh, zoned in two different zoning classifications. Yeah, there we go, uh, and this rezoning, uh, addresses the, to make it all AR one, so you see there's partly R one and partly AR one, and he's asking to rezone AR one. Now, to be completely forthcoming, the request for the rezoning is so that he can have a future request for a special exception to build, uh, a campground out here, but this is only the decision to rezone, uh, the property to a single zoning of AR one, uh, but again, I, I do want you to understand, his intention is in the future to come with a special exception, but the clarity is, is that, well, all we're asking for approval and the recommendation from the planning commission is singularly the rezoning issue, and he is here tonight, if you would like to hear from him.
If they, if they did that, would they come back later and rezone it into the agro-tourism zone, is that, is that the plan?
Well, the, the way, you, you actually have a, a caveat, a condition in the code that allows a church, uh, with, uh, the exception of a special exception, uh, to build a campground, so he would not, would not have to do anything other than ask for that special exception. So, no, to answer your question more specifically.
All right, for what he's asking for tonight, that's a clear-cut issue with us, right?
It, it's, it is to me, because obviously the ideal situation is to never have a parcel that's got two different zonings.
Yeah, motion to approve. All right, I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
So I'm gonna clarify what James is asking, so I know we're approving the, the zoning now, but you said he's gonna come back and ask for a special exception?
Yes, ma'am.
But he, okay, but he'll have to come back for that piece.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, all right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I, I was speaking with, um, Eva earlier today, going over this, and I seem to remember that there is a, a mobile home or a manufactured home that was requested, that was made for that property as a temporary building. I, I don't know that you had a chance to look, look that up, but I, I would be concerned to know whether or not, because I felt like that was to be a, a temporary building until a building was built or until something else is done, but I know that there are at least two or three structures that are out there now, so I just wanna make sure, um, what the permit status are on, on all of those buildings, and if we do have a temporary structure still out there, um, that we address that.
And, and if we, if we don't know, we can table until we find out tonight?
But if we're doing the rezoning, do we?
Well, yeah, the, I mean, the re, the, I feel like what you're saying is, you wanna make sure that we address these issues moving forward, are you asking that it affects the decision about the zoning?
No, no, but, but, um.
Before we move into the special exception coming?
Right, we certainly need to make sure that we know, um, because, you know, when we, people ask for temporary structures while they're building something or whatever, unless they come back and say, okay, we're doing something different, we, we, we don't really have a way to go in and police that.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I just remember that, that was a request early on, when that property, the owners bought it from the Manleys or whoever they bought it from, um, so, yeah, I would, but other than that, I don't have a problem with the, the zoning change.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, five zero, motion carries. Item number four, approval of zoning of nineteen parcels along the former city of Sunnyside Item number four, approval of zoning of nineteen parcels along the former city of Sunnyside City Limits, all of which have portion in unincorporated Spalding County.
Now, can we do all of this one, attorney, at one time? If I read them all, can we approve them all?
No, uh, you'll need to take a vote on each different one, 'cause not all of them go to the same zoning class.
Okay.
So this, um, this is the current zoning, and as I was saying to some of you earlier, you'll see that when the city limit for the city of Sunnyside was drawn, it was drawn in a circle, which is also very unusual. It doesn't follow the shape of the parcel, so there were nineteen separate parcels of the hundred and five that were split by the city limit line, so creating, uh, two different zoning, so you could see it throughout, throughout the map. So that's why the nineteen parcels have to be addressed individually. Everything that was wholly within the circle, the other eighty-six parcels, can be done as one because they're all the way inside the city line. So this is the current zoning.
The, the purple there, that's the only one that's going to C-two, right?
Well, uh, yes, yes, sir.
It's just the one, and that's.
Just the one.
We already approved our side of that being C-two, that's the, uh, the RV.
It's going to C-one B.
C-one B.
C-one B, C-one B.
From C-two to C-one B. And so, because obviously, they, when they wanna do things, you know?
Yeah.
We don't want it to have a different zoning, but.
But that is that spot, right? Isn't that, isn't that the RV? Place that owns all the travel trailers?
Is that the?
Yes.
I haven't heard your comment, so I didn't catch the first part of that.
Yeah, we have it up on the, on the screen, if you can see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I wanted y'all to see it closer, so.
Yeah, that was the one I'm.
And then, you'll see some of them that didn't have an assigned zoning, so we had to, and we took the map out and Newton and we sat around the table and sort of studied, you know, what made sense, what we, so in this case where it's R-two and R-one, you'll see on this one that we're recommending it be R-one completely. But I do wanna point out three parcels specifically. The first is the former Sunnyside City Hall. We are, uh, we were requesting, and the planning has done a major recommendation, the planning commission, to, um, uh, office institutional because we own it now.
Oh, so the, the blue, that's.
This is the office.
I'm with you.
Now, um, I'll grab my glasses, don't point too long there. Am I speaking loud enough? Uh, so, this parcel, this parcel here, which you see on the current map, the majority of it is R-one inside the city limit, and then there's this piece at the bottom that's C-one. And so our original recommendation was for the whole parcel to become R-one.
Yep.
And Mr. Flint was at the planning commission meeting, and he asked to be considered, instead of making the whole parcel R-one, to have the whole parcel C-one.
Is there any development there now?
There's nothing there, that's all. But you'll see underneath it is a C-one, and then over here is also a C-one. So, but I, I, so while our original recommendation may have been to go with the planning commission's, uh, recommendation to you all, there is some consideration to not put it into commercial and to in fact leave it in its, as R-one, because the majority.
Uh, it is R-one.
So, um, this is one of those situations where the staff's recommendation is torn, because if the planning commission made the recommendation, the staff's recommendation would follow that lead. But now that the board of commissioners has a different perspective, we, obviously you would want to address that in discussion tonight. Um, and then so I said there were three parcels I wanted to point out. The first one we've already talked about, the bigger one here, and then there's also this small one that you see here, is currently C-one. Well, when we were, when we were gonna ask to make this R-one, we were also gonna ask to make this R-one. And, 'cause it's not being used commercially now, right, Eva?
Yeah.
So we just thought, since it's all, if you choose R-one for this parcel, then maybe it doesn't make sense to have this one commercial property in the middle of all the residential.
There is a building on that property though, like a flea market, right? Has anyone had a business license there in, in any time in the last ten years? Or even in the last year?
I think there's, I don't wanna say it, 'cause I'm not a hundred percent sure.
But I don't think anybody's operating out of it right now.
So.
But to answer your question about the history of it, we have to.
They could have a business license.
Yeah.
Um, I, I agree with you on your assessment that, uh, the C-one property that belongs to the county should be office and institution. And when I sit here and look at that map, it does not make sense to have one end of old Atlant- uh, old Atlanta on the other side of School Road residential in the bottom side to be C-one. There's no development there, there is no business per se there. On one of those pieces of properties, I think there is like an old Quonset hut.
Yes, and that's, I think, the, 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 love him.
But nobody's run a business or had a permit out of that forever.
And, and I do wanna say, because I don't believe Mr. Flint is here tonight, uh, just so that you can hear what he, he's, there's nothing there, he, he's just talking about what so many people will, it's what he might wanna build in the future, right? And so you would want to be conscientious of that, to your point, you know? Are you comfortable making this C-one and then all this residential? That, that's really the question you have to ask yourself.
This is in accordance with the comp plan, plan use map.
Well, no, bec-.
'Cause the comp plan doesn't.
The comp plan doesn't really cover Sunnyside. It's, it was outside, we did the county part of it.
Right.
But we never decided what the inside of that would look like.
So the current county part is C-one, but it's a very small portion outside the city.
The, the whole thing is woods, we just looked it up on the satellite, it's all just woods.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing there.
But, but there is a house between the building that's now ours and that, that woods, so.
Right, there is a residential home. Uh, my, my thought process is, is that old Atlanta Road is a new bastion. I, on the other end, closer to town, I see that people are clearing that off, and there are several houses that have been there covered up forever that are actually being renovated. So I would rather have to make it the norm for it to be residential, and if there's something different, like community, neighborhood, commercial, that they come back to us and we can say, this would work in this, in this community. Um, one other question, on the outer side, on the western side of where we changed from the purple, which was C-one B, was that?
The purple was C-two.
C-two, okay, uh, directly across from, the street from that is the recreational vehicle place.
It's the same.
It's the same place, so my question is, why are you zoning one thing on the one side, and on the other side, where you really don't have a building, you just have cars parked, that we're calling it something else?
Well, the C-one B, I, 'cause I was here when, when we rezoned the, the part that's in Spalding, that was, that's essentially that RV store's outside storage, which is the difference between C-one and C-one B is the outside storage, and so that's, it makes sense because that's sort of their.
But across the street, they also have outside storage. I, I mean, they have cars for sale out there, they got RVs for sale, they got trailers for sale, so that's what I'm just simply saying, if it's the same business, why would it have a new?
It predates our text, on, on the east side, predates our text amendment that put outside storage into the, uh, C-one B class.
What do you call it, nonconforming?
It's a nonconforming grandfathered use on the east side.
Previously existing nonconform.
And on both of those pieces of property, and I see there's like a little flag thing that's sticking out.
If you remember, the tract was the gas station that was torn up and destroyed in the tornado. All right, at that point, then, they came in and sought zoning, they had to seek zoning both here and in Sunnyside. Sunnyside only had C-two, didn't have a C-one B class, so that's the reason there were two different classes there. And, um, ultimately, this just puts it in line, the class it should be for outside storage under our ordinance.
So, but, but I, I guess if it were the same as the, the zoning across the street, or if we changed it to the zone, what the zoning is across the street, it would just be a nonconforming class, right? It, I mean, it'd be grandfathered, but it's nonconforming.
And, and it'd be weird, 'cause it would be one parcel with two different zones.
Say if you decided that you wanted to make the whole parcel C-one, instead of allowing it to become C-one D, as I mentioned, then whatever it's being used for now stays, because it's already there. But obviously, if somebody ever came and took the building down and wanted to build up something new, then yes, they would have to adhere to the requirements of C-one, if, if that's what you're considering.
And, and I'm, and the reason I'm saying that is because we have not had good luck when we have allowed people to bring their businesses and they have outside storage. It's, they've always, um, I mean, like the building across the street that we're talking about, that stuff is just like somebody threw some cars out there and it's going all, every kind of way. Um, it's not like if you move down the street where they're selling trucks and you see all the stuff lined up, like you would, you see what I'm saying? So there, I, I don't mean to be ugly, but there is too much of an opportunity to not do it right.
And that's our entrance corridor.
Right, and so that is what I'm concerned about.
And, and don't forget, you're, this is the overlay, so, uh, you know, I, I can see the wisdom of rezoning that to C-one, so that whatever happens next, it's not just complying with, you know, the, the, is in fact complying with all the new requirements for C-one. So, I mean, anything you see wrong, unreasonable about that, Newton, and it's totally tolerated by C-one, so if that's something you wanted to consider, you have that opportunity.
You would, you would have, I'm sorry, James, go ahead, excuse me.
I was just saying, what if we, what if we approved the rest of them and tabled that one so that staff, um, and hopefully the owner will hear us, could review and see if those folks are going to bring it up to the standard we'd like to see it. Last time when they came for a, the, the C-one B change in the Spalding County part, the same thing was brought up and they were able to come and repaint and re-strike that parking lot and like, had it, had it looking nice, at least on that side of the road. Um, maybe, maybe we give them that opportunity this time as well before approving some sort of.
I don't know that that parking lot is, that's dirty.
Can't make them do it, I mean, whatever they came in as, that's what they're doing.
So, so they would be grandfathered, but if they failed to get their license permitted in a year's time, they would lose that grandfathering. I, I just think if we're trying to create a system of what we wanted to look down nineteen forty-one, if you're there, we can leave you where you are, but if someone new comes in, it would, it would fall into that, because that's, that's our northeast corner.
There, there may also be conditions on the part that was in the county, because I know we placed conditions when Sunnyside had to zone it to C-two.
We did, we did.
Okay.
Now, I do not recall what those conditions are. The goal, the goal for this was just to make them.
To make sure that the new half has the same conditions everywhere.
The, the goal for this was just to make them consistent, so you didn't have purple inside the circle and pink outside.
I totally get it. So can we get to some consensus on what it is that we, I mean, are, if, if that's a sticking point, is there another sticking point on this so that that's the only thing that we have to talk about?
On the map, everything else is okay, but I, maybe we tabled that one to see if there's any conditions that we want to attach to the entire property, you know what I'm saying, like, as opposed to.
But I think when we say everything else is okay, do you mean?
I, I think we should do that one as ours.
See, no, residential, R.
So, we would, you would think you might leave this entire parcel R-one?
Yeah.
And then also change this to R-one, instead of leaving it C-one? Okay, yes, and then the one that we, uh, leaves as unresolved is this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Sylvia, the, the parcel that's got the little, the little sliver in the county, that is one of the nineteen that required.
It's the last one.
It's the la- that's Faircloth, I believe, or Fair something.
It's number nineteen, it's in there.
The other one, though, will have to be accepted out from the generic zoning map approval for the eighty-six parcels.
That little dead end, that's Ann Street, right? That, 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 that other C-one is on the corner, yeah.
Is Ann Street, yeah.
It, it looks, from the satellite map, it looks like there's a, a parking lot and.
It's like a flea market building.
All kinds of shenanigans there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, maybe that does stay C-one, 'cause they're using it as a business.
Well, I mean, they can still operate their business there, even if it's zoned residential, because they're there.
We can't change it.
You can't give them all.
Right.
Right, you can't make a move.
Changing, changing the woods from C-one to residential is one thing, but like, changing the zoning of a business to res- you know what I'm saying, like, if there was woods, I'd go, yeah, change it to residential as well, but if it's, if they're operating a business, like, that'd be weird to.
So I, that's why I was asking if that business has been licensed or permitted to operate in, at some time.
I thought you were talking about the one across.
And that's the business that's been grandfathered.
And it has not.
Is that someone that's been grandfathered to him, right, or no?
Well, that's, it's C-one now. Okay, let's try to figure out where we are.
And so Newton, I do wanna clarify, this was advertised as R-one in the original advertisement, because it was only after the planning commission wanted to consider leaving it C-two, so just remember that.
So then do we need to re-advertise? No, no, you will have to make a, uh, James, you'll have to make a, understand, the, inside the circle, if the parcel was completely inside the circle, you, you are adopting the map within the circle as a whole. So if there is a change in the color on the map for that parcel, which is, and Sylvia, I don't know what the parcel number is.
It's five hundred, zero, six, zero, one, nine.
Okay. You will, you will have to identify that as a separate.
Entity.
Entity, right, now, number, number nineteen is on your agenda right now, that is the Fair, Faircloth property. Um, and that, it's not Faircloth, let me get the right name, Faircroft. That's Faircroft, and you have to make an individual decision on that because it had different zoning inside the circle and outside the circle.
I, I think, I think we've reached a consensus, that should be R-one, the one that's split. And then, do we want, do we wanna check on that other C-one that's fully inside to see if it has a business license that they're, 'cause if they're previously nonconforming, then, yeah, change them back to R-one, but if they're operating per the rules and have a business, you know what I'm saying, it'd be weird to.
There's no business there, I asked, I asked Eva to pull the, the, what is it, the ground view of it, and it's just a boarded-up building. Um, I don't know if anybody can pull it up and show it here, that was why I was saying, if, if they haven't permitted it and nobody's operated a business out of it in years, um, it's just crazy to leave that sitting in the middle of what we're planning, what we, we hope people will be able to see as residential.
You're, you're right, that's, that's a closed business.
Yeah.
Okay, now, let's go back to what we're trying to get done here. As I remember, Newton, you said we gotta go through each one of the, you said nineteen.
You will have to take a vote on each of the nineteen parcels, which was, uh, which were divided by the circular city limit line. Now, if it's inside the circle in its entirety, you are adopting a zoning map. So you would, the motion there would be to, um, approve the proposed zoning for the Sunnyside Service District as shown on the map, with one exception, and that would be that little tract, no, the, the smaller one, that one, 'cause they will vote on Faircroft, which is nineteen.
All right, so we're talking about item number five. Right now, what you're talking about is item number, approve the zoning of eighty-six parcels.
That's correct, that is being done by a map, by adoption of a map that has all eighty-six parcels on it, rather than having to have you vote.
On every parcel within the city.
On eighty-six parcels, and we're able to do that because we are taking the position that the Sunnyside zoning service district map constitutes the adoption of a zoning ordinance itself, because of the way House Bill five forty-two separated them out.
All right, so.
And so the nineteen is everything that is around the circle.
That's correct, that was divided.
Right, right.
That was divided.
That's all we have to do.
I think it was divided by the line.
All right, so item number five, approval of zoning of the eighty-six parcels that lie completely within the city limits of the former city of Sunnyside, with the exception of.
Whatever the parcel number.
Parcel five hundred, zero, six, zero, one, nine.
All right, do I have a motion to do that?
Yeah, motion to approve the, uh, those eighty-five parcels, so taking out, which parcel number, five, zero?
Well, now, not this one, y'all are addressing that one.
Right, 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 that's not part of this.
Five hundred, zero, six, zero, one, nine.
Why are we taking that out?
We're changing it to R-one, 'cause you wanted to.
Not taking it out, just sort of pulling it out for specific.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we, we're, we're, the rest of them, we're adopting the map as proposed.
And since the map shows this as pink, y'all wanna put it back to yellow, so you have to pull it out as a separate. to pull it out as a separate.
That's correct.
And this is for the ones that are all solely in.
And what about, what about the one to the right of that, that, oh, I forgot, it's going to touch the outside stuff. Okay, all right, that was a good motion, who made it?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Sylvia, what was the parcel number of the one excluded? 500.
500-06-019. Who seconded it?
I did.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on, yeah, old item number five? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, now, let's go through the 19 parcels.
Yeah, now, what's the one that we are, the other one that we're changing, that's across the street there?
Uh, the parcel number is 500, it's the last, it's number 19.
Number 19.
Okay.
500-07-003.
And then the other one, we are just going to C1, we're not holding off on that one, right?
Well, that.
That's up to y'all.
That's up to y'all, what y'all want to do.
Well, it's on the, it, we have to deal with it individually, because it's on the edge.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Do you go to 1C1 or C1B? That's the.
What do we get to, what do we grab hold of?
Okay.
So, Mrs. Chairman, you're, it's the night, it's the last one.
Oh, I thought, that's the, yeah, I thought that was that one.
We're talking about this one now.
All right, here we go, let's just go through, if you've got questions or if the staff's got something.
It's, it's the only C1B.
Well, that's 10, yeah, that's 10, okay, that's number 10.
All right, application 24-1Z, 1C, 10CZ, A Piece of Cake Rentals LLC, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent 20B Stockwell, Stockwell Drive, approximately .45 acres, located in Land Lot 107 in the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential Low District, Density, and R2 Single Family Residential Low Density to R1 Single Family Residential.
Motion to approve. All right, I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. We're done with that one. Next, application 24-11Z, Page Valley, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent
117 Teeman Road, approximately .48 acres, located in Land Lot 107 in the Third Land District. Spalding County is res, requesting a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential Low Density to R2 Single Family Residential Low District, Density, excuse me, to R1 Single Family Residential.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0.
Application number 2412Z, First Baptist Church of Sunnyside, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent 28, Church Road, parcel 500-02-001, approximately 25.84 acres, located in Land Lot 107 in the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning from AR1 Agricultural and Residential and AR2 Single Family Residential Low Density to AR1 Agricultural and Residential.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0.
Who seconded?
That was my second.
Thanks, Lilian. Yes, uh, item, next item, application 24-13, Jose Fabriani Abazaki, owner Spalding County
Board of Commissioners, agent 168, Church Road, approximately .58 acres, located in Lon, Land Lot 108 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of R1 Single Family Residential Low Density to AR1 Agricultural and Residential to AR1 Agricultural and Residential.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, did we have anybody sign up to speak tonight?
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
That's a good point, we didn't address that.
Good catch, right?
Wanted to make sure.
Application number 24-14, William R. and James W. Slaughter, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent 101, 01, Slaughter Road, approximately 1.4 acres, located in Land Lot.
Four acres.
Excuse me, four acres, uh, located in Land Lot 108 in the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of R1 Single Family Residential Low Density to AR1 Agricultural and Residential.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, would you like for me to give your voice a break, and I'll read for you?
Thank you.
Okay, application 2415-C, Adolfo C. and Andores Martinez, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent 4035 North Expressway, approximately 2.09 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Application 24-16Z, Samuel James Davidson, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 0 School Road, parcel 500-06-030, approximately .39 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Did y'all go on?
Yes, please, you're doing.
Okay, application 24-17Z, Ted Davidson, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 0 North Expressway, parcel 241A, 02034A, approximately 6.5 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries, thank you.
Application 24-18Z, Falahi Farhad and Abolverda Parvin, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 0 North Expressway, parcel 241A, 02034A, approximately .39 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Thank you, motion carries.
Application 24-19Z, 3981 North Expressway LLC, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 3981 North Expressway, approximately 0.96 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1B Heavy Commercial and C2 Manufacturing to C1B Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay.
So.
So this is the one.
This is the one there, what, what are we thinking of? I mean, I.
I would like to make a motion to rezone that to C1, and so that it, it coincides with the rest of the commercial that's on that property.
Wait, is the other side C1 or the other side C1B?
What's the other side, across the street?
This side?
Mm-hmm.
Across this street.
No, no, the, the other half of the parcel.
Ah.
Oh, the other half of the parcel is currently C2 and C1B.
What, do we have a C2 zone?
You do, but it's different. Sunnyside did not have a C1B zone, so it had, um, it had to go to C2 under their ordinance when the property came up.
I would like to make a motion to table that until we have more discussion on it. Can we do that, Newton?
Yeah, sure.
Second.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion is tabled. All right, the vice chair will start reading now. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Application 24-.
Number 11, application 24-20Z, Kaiser and Tazin Babwahab, owner Spalding County of Board of Commissioners, agent 3970 North Expressway, approximately 0.8 acres, located in the Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries, please continue.
Application 24-21Z, Samuel J. James Davidson, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 30, 3970 North Expressway, approximately 0.8 acres, located in the Land Lot 107 of the Third District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District.
Motion to approve. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries, thank you.
Application 24-22Z, Stephen J. Bios, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent 5141 Old Atlanta Road, approximately 1.6 acres, located in Land Lot 108 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial and R1 Single Family Residential Low Density to R1 Single Family Residential Low Density and North Expressway Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Application 24-23Z, Adrian Hernandez and Estrella Castro Castro, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent 5113 Old Atlanta Road, approximately 0.72 acres, located in the Land Lot 108 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial and R1 Single Family Residential Low Density to R1 Single Family Residential Low Density and North Expressway Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand, uh, after this one, James, will you start reading?
Sure.
Go ahead.
He's making air by the word.
Application 24-24Z, BRTU Construction, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 79 School Road, approximately 2 acres, located in the Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0.
All right, so I'm on 17?
16.
16. Uh, application 2425Z, uh, 4026 North Expressway, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 4026 North Expressway, approximately 8.35 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Application 2426Z, Kazir and Tazin Babwahab, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 3970 North Expressway, parcel 500-06-010, approximately 1.2 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial to C1 Highway Commercial and North Expressway Improvement District Overlay. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Application 2427Z, Kathy D. and George W. Culver, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 8, excuse me, 4883 Old Atlanta Road, approximately 1.04 acres, located in Land Lot 107 of the Third Land District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning of C1 Highway Commercial and R1 Single Family Residential to Low Density, R1 Single Family Residential Low Density and North Expressway Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a, second?
Second.
Yes?
Just so we're clear, this is, this is moving that into the yellow, from, from pink, so this is out?
That's the number 19 that you're about to read?
That's, yeah, the number 18 on this, that's in that, that one?
No, the last one, which is number 19, is this parcel.
Okay.
2428Z.
Okay.
Okay, I have a mo, a motion, and, uh, do I have a second?
Yeah, Ryan's second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries.
Application 2428Z, Faircroft Investments, LLLP, owner Spalding County Board of Commissioners, agent, 4890 Old Atlanta Road, approximately 2.36 acres, located in the Land Lot 107 of the Third District. Spalding County is requesting a rezoning to C1. I make a motion that we rezone this to R1.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
We, we will, I have to come back and, the, the little sliver is, is R1 already on the outside?
No, the little sliver is C1, but now because of this motion invoked, it'll be.
It'll go to R1.
Okay, 'cause we're, 'cause we're talking about the entire thing, not just.
That's correct.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Motion carries, thank you.
I, I know the.
Already done, what was the old?
I know y'all have already voted on number five, or what was number five.
Mm-hmm.
Could, uh, could I make a suggestion and have you revote, 'cause this was out of order, and that you would adopt the zoning shown on all parcels within the circle of the proposed zoning for the Sunnyside Service District with the following exception, parcel 500-06019 will be, that's R1, and it, it goes from, uh, C1 to R1.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, now this is the second voting on this, to be able to get it back, to do it correctly, in the right order, all right? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5, 0. Thank you, all right, uh.
Thank you for indulging the revote, that covered, that, that covered that other parcel as well.
I appreciate that, uh, does everybody sign the, uh, I'm through with all that, everybody sign the letter, I'm looking for him.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I've got one thing before we adjourn tonight. So, my, I, y'all probably know, most people don't, but, uh, my son was burned back in October, and we had to direct him to the hospital, and this is a big deal, and our, our bill was $17,000 or something, and, um, our part that's not covered is still like $3,400. When we redid, I think we did this a couple of years ago, we moved the $1,000 deductible to a $4,000 deductible, and that was going to save us like $600,000, so we set aside $250 to keep it, like, to reimburse people to effectively stay at a 100, but.
Right.
For the, remember when we did that?
Yeah.
So I, this is the first I've had to deal with anything major, so we, I went at HR and kind of said, what do I, what do I do with this? And they had never heard of it. They were like, what are you talking about? We, we, and I went, I mean, I don't, this is the first I'm dealing with it, but like, we definitely remember passing this, like, I, I called Clay and said, I mean, did I, am I, did I have a stroke and not do, you know, like?
Was that with the, well, that was the previous insurance carrier, though, right? When we actually made that change? Was that with previous insurance?
I, I think so, but I think we still have that same, I think our deductible's still $4,000, but we reimbursed down to $1,000.
So I was thinking that we did that because we became self-insured and.
Right, right, right.
The print, the, uh, the deductible went way up, so we were supposed to help offset that, so, yeah.
But there's, there's two issues, one is, you know, A, how do we.
How do you get reimbursed?
But if, if I walked in and they went, we've never heard of this.
So how much were you, how much was our out-of-pocket expense though? Because there's, we have an out-of-pocket expense, a max that we actually have to pay. Do you know what that is?
For that, for that one event, it was like thirty-four hundred and some change.
Is that, is that what the bill, what, what's the?
That's, that's the part. We've already struck the track for, for that amount. And, you know, my wife was like, oh, and I went, hey, wait a minute. I think we get reimbursed up, you know, down so that our out-of-pocket is just a thousand. But I, I'd never had to go through it before. And, but we have two issues. One, how do we get it done? And like, if HR didn't know about it.
If anybody else got a chance to.
You know what I'm saying? So we've been.
Because my concern was that who is going to be able to pay, if you got four thousand dollars to pay.
Yeah.
On a, on a bill, you don't really need insurance. And that, the whole thing of having the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was so that our employees could be able to have it, get that help back down to a thousand.
Let's have Erica get ahold of Steve when he gets back and get it squared away.
Yeah.
Because this is obviously, we think one thing, and if we don't know about it, or we're moving on one road, and HR's moving on another road.
Well, because, I mean, I'm thinking, the way I'm thinking is, you know, unfortunately, I, I, you can't have it both ways. I mean, with a higher deductible, but we're lowering our insurance, and we had, and if, if there's a certain out-of-pocket that we have to pay, you wouldn't get either reimbursed or pay a.
No, no, no. So the, the insurance deductible was four thousand, but then we set aside, I want to say it was a quarter million dollars, to reimburse the employees.
Yes.
So that they wouldn't pay the four thousand dollars.
And so it's, it's how do I, how do I take advantage of that reimbursement?
So is that allotment, is that what you're saying?
You know what I mean? And I know that we.
Is it eighty-two or something?
But now I know why we haven't been in it, because.
But we all talked about the fact that four thousand dollars was too late.
We can't answer the question now.
Yeah, I just, I really was just sort of a, hey, we.
We're going to get to the, the county manager and HR to get us an answer. And the next time we meet.
It could have been a call insurance on her, too.
On the third, let us an answer.
And Ty's doing great. He had three spots of very deep third-degree burns, and now he's got one little scar under his arm here that we're still working on. So the, the miracles of modern, modern burn technology are incredible.
Chairman, can you indulge me for ten seconds? I just want to know that I graduated today.
Hey!
Although when they said, the last time they said it was welcome to Dog Nation, I'm like, ooh, I'm a tech man. But anyway, so hopefully.
Let's get a picture with her.
Yeah, come on.
Okay, before y'all walk, I just want, wanted to say, we talked about this in our meeting the other night. I have a request that we go back and look at the zoning on North Hill Street because the entire front where residential people are living, have lived for the last hundred years, is all zone commercial.
We need to compare that with the future land use, because if that's supposed to be a commercial strip.
Yeah.
Some, some of those old parcels at one point had industrial zoning.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean.
Years ago.
So because they're building a Dollar General Market right next to the Family Dollar that is right next to People's Houses on North Hill Street. So I'm like, okay, so the next.
Is that city?
It's in the campus. But it's, the city's right across the street.
That's what I was, I was saying, it was right at the city line. I'm sorry. I'm holding them up. I'm blocking them.
No, I'm.
Come on, man.
Get your ass.
I'm over here in shorts. I should be behind somebody.
No, it's her.
Go this way here.
All right. Does everybody have a picture?
Congratulations.
Rita Jones, this man. Newton came all down here real soon. When does, when, when does he not?
I'd rather he can wear shorts.
See, I've never seen Newton.
And get out of my seat.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to wear lawyer clothes when I'm supposed to be a lawyer here.
Congratulations to you.
Uh, Jesus be a shield, not a sword. That's what I have to say. Thank you. Congratulations.
Others are still running and working their way through that. All right. Let's quickly go through and see if there's anything before we.
Nothing for me. Keep our county manager in prayers. I know he's in fine hands, but, you know, we want him to recover quickly and get back to the business of getting back to the business of us. Yes, he can take all the time he needs. We know that he is not going to not be working.
I'm sure he's listening right now.
Yes.
Seventy-two emails that he wrote on the way back from the hospital. Yes, that's what we're talking about. All right. Anything from the vice chair?
One of my emails had fit on it. Slobbered. Should have been writing.
Do I have a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
James, go ahead. Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero. We're adjourned.